Oh, yeah. Mind to put this meeting to order and we'll start off with a pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, united, individual, with liberty, justice, and... All right, we have a update. I'm going to take a motion to accept the agenda. Second, a motion in a second. Any discussion? Not fearing any vote in favor. We oppose, but unanimous. Elena, you're up.
Hello. Okay. Good morning, everybody. Good morning. We are here to discuss our budget, and I just wanted to give you all a chance to ask specific questions you may have about the different line items. But I did want to just call out a few additional things that I have asked for in this year's budget. One of the first things would typically be a revenue and an expense line item for a gift shop. As you all know, unfortunately, the Southport Historical Society has deployed the help of the Fort Johnson Museum Gift Shop. They currently do not have the volunteer staff to be able to effectively run a gift shop in the museum any longer. And so they have been gracious enough to offer us $3,000 of seed money for us to get the gift shop back on going. In addition to that seed money, which we have not received yet, so you don't see it reflected on this budget, we're asking for $5,000 with a plan to break even on that on the first year, and then reevaluate after year one to see if that's a November that we want to continue doing, if it is profitable or not.
And that's a lot of money significantly.
We have not had the gift shops since, I believe, 2012. It's been with the Historical Society from that point. I do not know if at that time we were making money.
I have a question in regards to the $5,000 in, $5,000 out, basically revenue neutral.
Right.
Like regular $5,000. But my question is, is the soft cost of somebody has to staff it? And so if they're staffing that, what are they currently doing that they're not going to be able to do?
So my assistant director, Jessie Labelle, is over the museum, and at the moment it's over the museum, over Fort Johnson Museum. And she has agreed to take on the gift shop in other professions that she's had prior to this position, specifically because she was working for the Lynam House in Wilmington. She managed the museum as well as the gift shop at the same time, and is confident that she can do that again. We also did have an active role with the gift shop while it was being run by the Historical Society, because those are our volunteers, the city volunteers, who were running the gift shop on a day-to-day basis.
Maybe put it as opposed to the Historical Society.
Correct. Correct. Yeah, this one has to change, is on the...
I'm assuming that the... I'm assuming there's a volunteer that we had who probably liked everything else around Fort Johnson, and they get down, and we just can't find the people to do it.
Yeah, I don't think that question...
I would be interested, but I assume there's a lot of people that have been volunteering because they've downed, and they really don't, we can't, we're having trouble getting people to come in.
You know, actually, our volunteer base, I think we're only using, just the other thing, we're only down one volunteer right now, two volunteers right now. We, and our staffing is every shift should have three volunteers on it. So even those shifts that we're missing one person from still have two dedicated individuals. So I feel like we're doing pretty well as far as keeping our volunteer staff up. And you know, we have really amazing volunteers who sit with us for a long time. So we're very, very fortunate in that regard.
The volunteer base in Southport, just that end, is very good.
Yes.
We have a lot of people that are assuming, man, that they, they jump in there, do they?
And we're lucky in the fact that at Fort Johnson, we have people who care about this community, who may not live within the city limits, who still participate, like Monday afternoons. It's all of them from St. James'. And it's just because they love the area and they want to get it back. And so we're very fortunate in that.
There was Phil Farrow, who ran, I understand, ran the operational part of the gift shop, how they learned things and made things happen, and with his passing, that seemed to be where the...
Yeah, there, yeah, there was a large oldness and very, there was variness across all aspects, whether it's museum aspects, Historical Society aspects, he's variness. But yes, he was the driving force behind that gift shop.
Well, I sing this song every budget time. Why are we competing with private business? We have stores in town that sell gifts, that sell very Southport-centric gifts, and the visitor center is for visitors who may want to buy something related to Southport. But there are storms where that can happen. So if we reset to zero, and instead of being a retail operation, we assist visitors, maps, a forestry walking tour of the notable trees and so on, why don't we give up the gift shop?
So our interpretation, and we're very cognizant of the fact that we do not want to compete with anybody, but we have a gym in Fort Johnson. It's a special building with a long history, and we have the goal of producing products that highlight Fort Johnson specifically. So not just general Southport merchandise, but something that you can buy a book that is sold to us by the Historical Society. So the Historical Society made a book, because they wrote it. We buy it from the Historical Society, sell it for profit, and it's about Fort Johnson specifically, or the revolutionary history of Fort Johnson's touchstone. We have our film history and an exhibit that specifically talks about it. So we would carry merchandise talking about our film industry specifically, because the city does own the copyright to some of that merchandise, and we loaned it out to the Historical Society, but it is that he owns. And so there's, there are ways to do it where we would become a unique experience of gifts that you could purchase, rather than being something that you could walk into a different store and purchase. And the other side of that is, we have specifically walked into stores to see what other people are selling, so we can put that on a do-not-buy list, so we're not pooping. That is never our goal. We want to be a standout fixture. And I would like to pose a question back to you. How many times have you visited a museum that they not have some sort of gift shop? We believe that it's part of an appeal of the museum half, of our museum and the gift shop center.
It's very difficult to walk out of the museum of modern Southport.
We don't want to make it difficult, but we do want there to be an offer.
Or they are where are you? I understand that. I'm just looking for ways to...
Absolutely.
For $5,000, I'll... Yes. I'm looking at... Being offered by staff an idea to start something, refresh it, that's my point. And I'm certainly interested in seeing how successful it will be for a nominal amount of money, and $5,000 is not going to fill one point four million dollars in any shape, form, and it should be revenue neutral, which is why I asked the first question about the soft cost. Person of selling stuff, they have to be doing something currently today that they may not be doing tomorrow, and what are we trading off? That's fine. That's the most important thing today, and maybe they have enough time to do that.
So she has been working with the gift shop and with the Historical Society about the gift shop since the day she started, specifically because before Phil passed away, he expressed that he wanted to transition out. I believe that he knew that he was sick. And unfortunately, that transition plan just never happened. We were, we were never able to come pose it as a question before it inevitably just happened, and he was gone. So now we're, it, we've been closed since January 1. We've heard feedback from volunteers and the public who walked in that they, they missed the gift shop. And so we're posing the question to you if we're able to do a test case for this, for one year, for $5,000.
But you said it's been closed since January. Are we talking about the museum itself has been closed since January?
Yeah. The museum remains operational, but the, the gift shop, all the items have been removed in the P O S.
Okay, so there are still people staffing?
Yes.
So as far as staffing is concerned, does it require additional people to run the gift shop? So that kind of not an issue then for all?
That's just an extra. Do you need somebody to pick up, and you said that volunteered to do that?
So really, the, the additional personnel cost is in the time for purchasing merchandise?
And then to stock and run the sale of the, the box, yes.
I suppose they're sitting there selling stuff.
Volunteers will be sitting there selling.
Selling stuff. Okay. And the items that you put in there, you will buy themselves, and they may even make a little profit. It's going to be, it'll lead to revenue neutral, so you're not getting costs.
Our hope is that we make a profit, yes, and that we are better than revenue neutral. But we will at least be revenue neutral.
And then where does that money go, if there's a profit?
Excellent question. So we are under a specific guideline that all of the money raised has to go back into the property. Now, the property is Fort Johnson, the building, Fort Johnson, the lawn, and actually includes the Maritime Museum property. So that is the property that makes up Fort Johnson. So as long as that money, then the next year goes back into a Fort Johnson-specific line item, whether that's purchasing more products for the gift shop itself, whether it's installing a new exhibit, whether it is a program we decide to do. All of that would count as property.
So like when we do the movies on the line?
Yeah.
Is that, so potentially this could help cover the costs for that?
We definitely could.
Do you do the movies on the line that comes out of yours?
That is part and rest. Last year, we did do a little of the test. We did a couple of adult, adult-themed movies that were specifically filmed in Southport. So we did that as a case. They were not as well-intended as the children-focused movies, so we don't think that we'll be moving forward with that again. We may try one or two in the fall just to do another test and see, but...
What do you mean by adult film?
Adult, like St. Haven, yeah, yeah, like St. Haven, or Walk to Remember, or, yeah. Firestarter.
Nobody's giving you a ride.
I mean, I was thinking we could really make a profit.
I'll appreciate it.
Just to play off of that, I know in 2012, they, the city made a decision to not be in the retail business and compete, and that's why they went joint forces with the Historical Society. And so then, I think that could be a win, if y'all essentially use the Historical Society's model, that they used all those, and the types of products they, which is their books, so that helps support them.
Yeah.
And so I think that, because of the D restriction, I, I thought the D restriction required a money to be spent on, I'm only using the word capital, but not operational. I can't remember exactly how it was worded.
We've read it upside-down in some ways. It's to be used on property, and it is very open-ended, and we're so thankful for that.
Okay.
It's not a shipholme requirement?
No, it was the federal government, the Sunpoint General or Commander, Commander at the time, wrote then, was engaged in all that, and that was part of us, the city giving it.
Yeah, it's part of the quick plan.
How complicated can this get? Thank you for the good idea.
Yeah, absolutely. The next new line item on my budget that I want to point out is the A250 line item. I had asked for $5,000 to go toward 3250 planning. This was an idea I actually heard at one of the board meetings, that we needed to go ahead and start planning ahead for this large celebration. And I quickly bring more. We are involved with the broader Brunswick County Committee for the A250 celebration. It's not an official committee yet. Actually, did they just vote? They voted on it yesterday, and I haven't heard, haven't heard back yet, but...
Other community relations.
It's 10826178.
Four X's.
Four X's.
Um, so the county commissioners did just vote yesterday on whether or not to make Brunswick County and the A250 committee. We are looking up to the, what the answer to that was. But we are very involved with that committee, and we have several things that we're currently in the stages of planning for. There are a lot of grants and things that we can reach out to, also involved with this A250 celebration, but they want to see buying from the community. And one of the ways that we ensure that buying is that in our budget, A250 is budgeted for. And so maybe we don't have to use the $5,000, but we can physically show them when we're going out for these grants, that we have the buying from our Board of Aldermen, that A250 is important to them, and that we are sanctioned, essentially, to put on these events for A250. We have two events that, actually Jessie is heading up, she's doing a fantastic job with it. One of them is community art, and we are doing that in partnership with Upright Arts, the Southport Artisans Guild, and Brunswick Arts Council to put that on. And then we have a rotating exhibit that we will get starting in June from Raleigh that highlights A250 activities and the goal of A250 and that sort of thing. That we will have in our museum from the start of June all the way through July. So when we get thousands of people into town, they'll know a little bit more about A250 because of us. And those are just the first two things that we're planning that are currently in the works. We hope to do more.
So clarification, the budget actually, but on that county project?
Yeah.
Are they just collecting the data from all the municipalities that are doing something and just magnifying that as a PR thing, or do they think they're going to sit on top of that and actually control what you're doing?
It's more of a PR, let's hold hands, can we get your volunteers to come over here and help us with this? Okay, let's make sure we're not putting events on the same day, so we're not stepping on each other's toes. It's supposed to be a helpful working committee.
You said, I hear this term all the time, the grants update.
Yes.
I'm not going to ask you to listen, I'm just going to ask you to tell them, have you actually specifically looked at grants that are really there?
Yes.
That we can apply for?
So the state of North Carolina has A250 specific grants that we have read through, and we do anticipate applying for.
So special marketing ops, rack cards, brochures, all of those things there, what is the purpose of those items?
So to market the different various things going on around town. That can be anything from our walking tours that we do for film or forestry. Forestry, yes, pay for half of theirs, we pay for the other half if they went out. We have a film tour, we have a pocket sites tour. Currently, we have a fellow who is revamping the historical walking tour in conjunction with the Historical Society, but we pay for the brochures to be given out to various residents and visitors, and our visitor's guide comes out with that. And then it's more specific things. So it's putting an ad in the state court pilot for Spring Fest. It's, we have a ongoing monthly ad in the Leland Southport Library that tells all of the events going on around town, whether they're city specific or if they're non-profit hosted, and we're just helping get the word out for those various events around town.
You, I saw a TV ad last night for Spring Fest. Are we spending a lot of money on that, or?
No. So with Cumulus Media, we have spent $650 for Spring Fest specifically, and WWAY, we have spent another $500 specifically.
I may be jumping ahead. You, the, is that the revenue line for movies?
Ah, you got it. Yeah.
At 15,000?
Yes.
Just to give you a heads up, the manager has asked me to reconvene the board, to look at fees and stuff. I do know that there's a parking lot in the yacht business, and they get $2,000 a day.
Yeah.
They, they max out way over the top of $15,000 just for a parking lot with no services, no money.
So I want to stress that because the rate committee has not met yet, my revenue line items are based off of current rates.
I just want to give you, and I understand why, why it is the way it is. I just want to give you a heads up that, will be asking you to come join us.
Totally fair.
With regards to our, like, Spring Fest and those are covering the cost of, okay, so we're not losing money on those?
So far, we have covered the cost of every event that we've put on where we have had paying attendees. So what I mean by having vendors, now there are some events that we have done in the past where they have just been a, we paid for them. Like the movies on the lawn, for instance, when we did that test case, we didn't pay people to watch the movie, so we just spent money on that. But all of the larger scale events where we have vendors, we have not spent more than we have made. I'll go, I'll go ahead.
Well, the, the other question, I think somewhere in here I saw insurance on the community building, and it hadn't been an item. There didn't seem to be any expense associated with it before. No reason for that?
Yeah, it was, it was all being charged to buildings and grounds, and we just split it out to some of the more specific buildings, so it's transferred to the other part.
Absolutely. Let me, you didn't ask for a conflict of interest or anything, but I am speaking in part from my own experience, but also for a number of my neighbors. The degree to which there is inconvenience to the city, and the streets are closed off, the I Am Street, for example, and South Davis, they both get closed off. So merchants and homeowners there are blocked in. I get blocked in every movie. And so that's my experience. But overall, it seems to me that we are charging very little for the impact on the city and the citizens. The city as in, we're closing off streets, we're affecting our retail businesses, we're affecting residents. And yes, it's glamorous for about 15 minutes to watch a scene be done, but over and over and over again, no. I don't know if we are charging, what, Wilmington charges?
It's the purpose of having me, that I just talked about, is just look at that whole thing, and then see where, see my, my going.
Yeah. And not, not, when I asked about that 15,000 as it relates to basically advertising, if we stop to advertise it tomorrow, they're still going to show up, you know? And, and so even if we charge Phil more, they're still going to show up. And if they don't show up and they don't pay it, we're still going to have a shit-ton of people showing up. So Southport's not going to...
I'll try my best, but it's...
I'm sorry. I could have talked in terms of tonnage, but... So I, I mean, those are the kind of things for me that i- if we charge Phil, and it's not hurting the residents, it's not hurting the, you know, the people who live here to do that. So I think it's certainly something we need to say as a, as a policy, that there are things we can cut, and while $5,000 here and there is small individually, it all adds up, and people are still going to keep coming.
Well, I don't necessarily disagree with you, but on the, on the filming, I was talking about the red, this is a revenue positive, $15,000, am I right?
Yep.
And I think it could be more than that.
Correct.
I'll be, one of the first overall, always say every year, I would say every year, I'll be encouraging the movies to come, and then encouraging them as opposed to discouraging them. Then if we're going to have movies here, fees, raising above $100 to block the main street, me, go slip anyplace else. And those fees are going to be astronomically more. And I'm not trying to raise them up so high that it would prevent them from coming, if the board wants them to be here, but there's a happy medium somewhere.
Well, that's certainly a policy. I mean, we can discuss right now. Is, is that something this board wants to move forward? But are we that, you know, what value does it bring to the community?
We can put that, we can have that discussion, but we can't have that vote.
I was going to say, I would like to say, just for the record, two things. I have looked at the film fees for this year. I am recommending an increase. So I've pulled rates from surrounding communities and come up with something, and we'll discuss that more in the rate committee. As far as the value that film brings, one of the things that we did was we had an intern who's doing her senior project, and recently put out a survey about smart kiosks in Southport. We are not looking into that anymore. If there was a consensus that that is not something we want in Southport, and that's totally fine. One of the questions on that was also about tourism in Southport, because the kiosks would be aimed towards the tourists, and also film. And while the overall response towards the kiosks itself was negative, the responses towards film specifically were very positive overall. And I'd be happy to reach back out to the community and find out how the average person feels about film. But we get people in all the time who think that it's so special to see Southport on screen. And there have been people who would move here specifically because we were on screen, and they saw us and fell in love with it, came and visited and said, this is my hometown. So I think that film in Southport has played a role for a very long time. I think that there is a way that we can make smart changes to lower the disturbances and still keep film a part of Southport.
I don't know if this is true, but I was told that before St. Haven and before Settlewood, I know what you did, that's why, well, I think that was not the blockbuster that St. Haven was. So anyhow, before that, this, you know, we were, we were not dead as a community, but we were not what we are now. So anyhow, before that, this, you know, we were, we were not dead as a community, but we were not what we are now. As a tourist destination, Southport is a destination now. And so I don't know what we got out of St. Haven, for example, but what we did get.
Not enough money.
Not enough money, correct, but we did get ten billion tourists. And in the summertime, there's a constant parade of people on West Brunswick Street looking for his house. It's Andy Spencer's.
So then, so then that's the question, is that something we won't, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Do we, do we still want?
I don't think, as I said, I don't think we need to encourage anybody else to come.
Hey, we.
I think that we.
They know we're here now.
Yeah, pretty much. So um, I think that, you know, we need to take a step back and say, how do we, how do we, you know, pick the reins again and, and start wagging the tail and not letting the tail wag us. Film has been, yes, it is cool and it's, you know, novelty, but is it a long-term?
Well, it would be interesting to have, went into the survey, but I specifically would like separate a component of that survey to go to the business.
Yeah, that's how we did the smart kiosk ones.
I, I'm always concerned that when we block houses for you to some visitor's street, that I, I don't know how that, I, I don't know how that impacts their business. And we get a hundred bucks, I mean, how much did they lose or gain by having the streets blocked? So it you have to kind of look at this in more detail.
Uh, just as an aside, I mean, this is me complaining, frankly. They, they can afford more. Um, as an example, the, one of the movies filmed last year. They, they got the location guy came to talk to me, they wanted to use my house. And it would involve only moving all the stuff out to storage at their expense, paying for residents for about a week in a hotel, and then they'd move everything back. And they would pay me a hundred dollars for this. I did not, my mo- my house is not in that movie, why? A hundred dollars, I didn't even try to bargain with them. But I hear similar things from other people in town whose interiors happen, you know, it's one thing for an exterior, although that's very inconvenient apparently. But to use an interior of your house.
But that's a personal, but that's not something that she would be dealing with, that's something you deal with.
Yes.
We're talking about.
It sounds like you can negotiate very well, because I have had a very different experience with the movie.
I've seen, yeah, I've seen rentals for like eighty grand, so.
Here.
On the beach, yeah, I have to make sure it's safe.
Well, that's the beach, but my point only is that if they will pay, and how little that they can get away.
Right, right.
They will, and they not charge for other movies.
But something to help you, our charging is not the rate they charge you.
Oh, I know. Again, my point is they will, they will pay the lowest possible rate. If we, if we have a high rate, they can pay that too, eighty thousand.
I mean, we're getting into what we have to have a conversation about in a rate meeting.
Right, we do.
I am talking about the budget today.
Well, but that's not, that's not, that's not, that's not.
Karen, did you wanna speak?
Well, not about this.
Well, and I, I don't think it's just a rate, I don't think it's just a rate conversation, it's a policy set at this level. We wanna continue to encourage people, you know, in droves to show up.
So one of the things that's, I'm sorry, I just wanna say for food for thought while we're thinking about rate committee and things like that. We may also want to institute a taxpayer option for um, film fees, especially if we are talking about raising them.
Is there such a thing?
Uh, not yet.
Is there, is there, is there something else, is somebody else?
No, this would be something that we would be doing differently, but specifically what brought it to my attention is Docher just recently did a commercial and they filmed in town. And they're subjected to the same rates as the industry companies, because we don't separate it out. Um, so that is gonna be part of my recognition is that we have a taxpayer rate for film fees versus a non. That way, uh, local businesses who want to do professional filming for commercials and things like that are not being um, charged to the same extent.
Well, I think going forward, we can make the policy, you can make the policy decision not to encourage. We can spend zero more dollars on advertising, the cat's already out of the bag.
Yes.
So we have to come to a happy medium between getting to a better film fee. So if we continue with the filming, we can pay that expense. Um, we're not necessarily, we can have no more films in Southport, people are still gonna come, irrespective of whether we encourage it or not.
Well, and I believe that, thanks. I think there are two types in your special marketing, and I think that's what's a little bit confusing. Rack cards and brochures are really for us, you do all of that so that we have them in our refrigerator about the events and the different things.
You can kind of vote, though, because if your visitor comes in, you will grab those.
Well, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, it's also for our community. You're not, you're not doing those to get people to come from outside, you're using it to show people from outside.
Yeah.
But it's our event.
Wonderful.
And then, and I, and I, if I remember back several years ago, certain things like our state magazine, you get scholars, not scholarships, but
Special jobs.
You get special things that are basically free to you to do.
It depends on the thing, um, one thing that we just did recently, um, our state magazine for their veteran issue had a full page left. And they said, we've got to fill up this full page, so they contacted us. And the city and the Fourth of July committee worked together to put out a full page ad. So the Fourth of July committee, they half, we paid half, um, and that was two thousand dollars. So we paid one, they paid one. Which is significantly less than it would have been.
It's an excellent. That's what I'm saying, they have relationships.
Yes, so um, that is not something that we actively look for, but everyone who contacts me about marketing, I tell them, you know, if, if you need a page filled, you let me know, because we can make it happen, because we have the staff in-house who can turn that around very quickly.
But again, do we need to advertise Fourth of July? Yes, it's not a secret that this happens and that there are all kinds of levels.
Yeah.
And.
But, but this is the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, this is a special deal.
I was gonna say, we're about to do so many really cool things, that I would love to be able to tell the people who aren't in Southport that we're doing it. Um, obviously, I will follow the direction of the board, no matter what you guys decide, how to support and I will follow through. However, I think that it would be a detriment to not share with people that we're doing these really cool things.
The film bothers me more, I'd like to jack those rates up.
Yeah.
And, you know, as a board, we just need to recognize that we don't need to do anything more to get people here.
The money within general is not sustainable.
In general.
Why does it help with that?
Not enough, yes, not enough.
Your wants not.
So um, I really hope this next thing that I'm gonna bring up helps with some of that, and so I'd love to get into it, it already, which is placer.ai. Um, so I don't think placer.ai. I was gonna ask you about that one, I can't.
So, so.
For the direct.
Yes.
You're really good at managing us.
Yeah, just whip and change.
So this report is pulled out about North Carolina Fourth of July's festival specifically. I had to pick one, so this is the one I picked, and this is last year's sex. Um, I should have kept one for us.
Hey, hey, thank you.
Thank you. So placer.ai. Are there any others?
We have, we have here.
Okay. It's a platform that uses cell phone paintings and towers to tell you how many people and the demographics of those people are in a given spot at any given time. It uses AI to then process that data and give you and give you statistics about the things that you can do with those types of people who are coming to visit me. So the first page under metrics, this states that during the Fourth of July festival, from the first to the fifth, we have forty thousand forty point eight K unique visits. And their average time at the festival during that unique visit was sixty minutes. Of those forty point eight, thirty three point four were considered visitors. What is considered a visitor for the purpose of placer.ai? Anyone outside of the two eight four six ones of code. So for placer, we will have to include St. James and BSL as part of ours. So they will be considered a resident for the purposes of this. So any statistics I ever give you from this, they will skew it just a little bit. What can we do with this data? We can look at parking, we could pick a specific road, let's say Bay Street. And we just mark off specifically Bay Street. And we say, okay, on August first, how many people were on Bay Street and how long did they stay? Okay, we can say, over the course of the day, this many vehicles parked here, um, they spent hardly any time there at all because they're walking from their cars to somewhere else. But that the person was in Southport for no more than thirty minutes, an hour, two hours, et cetera. Um, something else very interesting about this data is when we're talking about the museum. We can draw off museums specifically and say, okay, over the course of a year, how many visitors did we get? Okay, well, then you think, oh no, your staff and your volunteers who are here every week are going to skew those numbers. Well, that's where the AI comes in, and they pull out the same address. So my phone, if it pinged every day, they would pull it out, Jessie's, Karen's, all of our volunteers who were there on a regular basis. The only one that it would count is if somebody was new, they were only there once or twice. So it gives really good hard data to tell us who's coming into town. That also helps because of things like the meal tax. We would be able to say how many visitors we had visiting in Southport over a given period of time. How many of those were considered residents, that two eight four six ones of code, and who weren't included in that two eight four six ones of code. Um, this would live in my department and prove, I would use it for events and for um, grant opportunities to be able to say, hey, this is how many people we have coming with the Fourth of July festival, you should sponsor us. This is how many people we had come to Spring Fest, you should sponsor us. Um, we could say, this is how many people come into the visitor center, this is how far our reach is, you should give us this grant to help us review this exhibit that we're trying to do. So this is really important data, not just for me, but development services, financing, some of the projects that they will be working towards over the next couple of years as well. We have as many seats as we want, and so while this program would live in my budget, um, Mo would get a login, Joey would get a login. And we would be able to use this data and work collaboratively, collaboratively across multiple departments. I have a huge big brother issue with this. I know, it is a little creepy, for lack of a better word. However, that's why without the report, I wanted to show that you wouldn't be able to say, well, that's a liner right there counted in that. It's broader than that, and I wanted to make sure to stress that point today. I understand that I understand that as we're moving forward and some of these products and things come out, that um, it may be hard to wrap your head around, but the use of this, I think, outweighs any issues. How are we getting permission to track people? So you sign up for it when you hit accept all on it app. And then placer purchases the data from various apps, and they don't share what apps those are on purpose, so you can't, you know, dig into it. But like, for instance, when you say on Google Maps, I want to allow my location at all times. Placer could buy that data then, and then that goes into the data set.
Regardless of what we do.
It's our app.
There we go.
And this data goes back to twenty seventeen, which means that once we purchase the program, I would be able to tell year over year if an event, if something is growing or if it's shrinking, and maybe we're doing not as well. Or maybe it's switched days, did it do better on this day or that day? Did we have more people in town on Sundays or Thursdays, et cetera? There's a lot to do with data, for sure.
I haven't seen the program you're talking about.
Hmm.
With the data that you're getting from it. Can you download it out of that program and take it to a separate model and run analysis? Cause a lot of this stuff, these, these diagrams and all, they'll generate for you as well, so if you have the data, you can create it yourself as well.
Yes.
Can you download that out?
You can download data.
So you can get access to what they're using to make millions of dollars.
I, I'm sure that there is only to a certain level that you can download the data.
And this is too fixing technology.
Correct.
And so, and so, you got one employee that's gonna have longevity. She's gonna survive, because she's digging it, and I really appreciate what you're doing. I'm not crazy, I just look like it. Um, so, thank you for using this, this will give us real knowledge rather than, ah, I feel I'm a little, I know what's going on. This is hardcore data.
And, you know, I would say so far, I've been pleasantly surprised in the um, talks that we've had with placer. Some of the events I've had been pulled, our estimates weren't very far off. So it's nice to know, um, that we were on the right track, but this will give us the hard data, the proof that we need to get certain things.
If we had paid parking in this square and we had this much traffic, at ten dollars a person, how much would we have gotten?
Yeah.
God, you might not be correct, but I'm gonna, so, excellent, excellent. And your kiosk idea is not a bad idea, but I think we've got to work on our business model and not be concerned about what everybody else is doing right now, cause we're, we're upside down. So, once we get stable and we get into a new model where we service ourselves and not the tourists, which is my idea, the general. Then we can stop worrying about driving traffic to businesses that are doing things for us, not selling teddy bears for tourists.
How, how much is it?
It's twelve thousand dollars a year.
Twelve thousand?
Hmm.
So if we would have, if we would use it for a year, we would do a test run on a lot of partners and hopefully keep records of what they're asking and what they're getting, so that we can show at the end of the year, that, cause benefit analysis.
Yeah, and I was.
Yeah, exactly.
How far are we tracking? I mean, this shows people going to Middleton Park, it shows going to Oak Island Marketplace. Yeah, it only does a Southport destination and then the next destination, and then we cannot follow them past that. And does it do the destination where they came from also? Yes, so we're getting before and after.
And we're getting demographics of who's busy.
Yep.
And if we looked at any other communities that deprived of this, it must be very experienced.
So I have not spoken to any specific communities, I've just spoken to, for instance. I do know that other communities have used this, other municipalities. Um, the only other place that I have talked about using this data is Cubed Media, because they are a local partner, who uses placer. And they, they love it, I mean, they use it all the time to help sell their products and to also be able to know um, who their voices are. So when they are drafting a commercial for Spotify, who's listening and that sort of thing. So their use is different than ours, but they have really enjoyed the program.
You would probably look at somebody like Brixton Beach or Carolina Beach, somebody like that has something similar to what we are, as opposed to looking to say, Leam.
Yeah, and it seems like other uh, TDA's, tourism destination authorities are the ones who are purchasing platforms like this. And then they're giving that data to their constituents, um, unfortunately, our TDA does not. use the platform.
Have you tried to go above them and buy the data that they buy?
I have not. I have looked into their competitors because there are other there are other companies who do stuff like this. None of them have been in the game as long nor have as robust data as Placer does. They're really the best on the market currently for what they do.
It's very new. And, and, and really what they're doing is really writing prompts. And putting them on a website and dazzling people with prompts that you could write yourself if you had the data. It is, I know that sounds crazy, twelve thousand dollars. They're getting rich fast.
How much man hour can you go to?
No, no. Ten minutes. Ten minutes is when the man hours you're gonna use, putting it in, loading it into a logical language model and asking it a question. It's not as hard as people think. It's just how bold are you to try something that normally you wouldn't have been able to do before, but now you can. It's, it's really there.
As a, um, can you run an entire year or is this based on?
So you could do an entire year.
That would be interesting. I mean, one of the things I, I, I see here is that one of our greatest assets during the Fourth of July is Waterfront Park. Right? So that, those, statistically, that would be interesting to see over the year. What does that look like? What is our greatest asset? You know, is it a public asset or is it a private asset? Because we've got companies like our, you know, businesses like a prison company on here as well. So that would be some, I, I like this. I think that's long term. This is a very positive thing.
But what is the real purpose of this other than something that's whiz bang interesting? And it's marketing. And are we committed to marketing Southport still? I mean, there's a lot of stuff I'm gonna enjoy and I'm looking at. But how does Southport benefit specifically financially from having this?
I think that, in my opinion, the way this works flows is that this gives us ideas on parking. How do we handle parking? What is the most congested? What is the most visited areas?
Do we need this to tell us that? Yeah, but I mean, do we really need something like this to tell us that our greatest public asset is Waterfront Park? I mean, we know these things already.
Let's build a model that allows us to look into the future. And this is models, modeling. If we did pay parking, what would be the result? None of us are that smart. I don't care how much ego any of you got. There are none of us that can figure that. These things can do it like that. And so you allows us to look into the future without, without guessing. Data, which is, so, um, for a year, I would like to use it. Okay, uh, I'll use another example, Airbnb scraping. We paid twenty thousand dollars for probably a piece of software that's probably about twelve lines of code. Literally. It's that easy, but yet we're scared. Let's just pay the twenty thousand dollars and get what we want. Or some, somebody else I know that does it in my house. So thank you for the, uh, reaching out and trying something new.
Am I correct when I'm looking at page that, Fourth of July, it appears that we had seventeen thousand people? Second one then? On that particular day?
A lot of choice. Yeah, if I was on a computer, I'd be able to hover.
Which is much different from the numbers that we've been talking about. Thirty thousand, thirty thousand, we had thirty five, we had thirty thousand.
But if you look over Yeah, yeah.
What they're talking about on the day.
On the day.
On the day.
Didn't you say two eight four six one was sort of separated from that?
Um, so we had forty point eight K visits. That includes the two eight four six ones of code. The thirty three point four K is our visitors, anyone outside of the two eight.
What this number down at the bottom is total people.
Uh, visits, daily visits.
Right, both, both and then.
So are we tracking our citizens where they're going? Like, oh, I had to go to Dozier Hospital this morning and then I went to Oak Island and then I came back to the Southport and went to Waterfront Park.
We would only be able to do that if we said we want to draw a box around Dozier and figure out what people in Dozier are doing after they leave Dozier Hospital. That's a specific model that we've run. However, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be that wouldn't benefit us to know.
And what we, well, what, what they need learning is are people going straight to CBS or Walgreens or whatever? So, but we're not, it's not, but it's not down to Rebecca's going to grab a cheeseburger.
What, why do we need it? Well, the traffic, we do have the traffic, uh, things, but these models would tell us which roads we need to look at first, which ones, uh, more in depth than just numbers. It's, there's a lot of use to it.
Be interesting to see where people came from and went to after leaving case code.
I guess.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I hope not, I want.
Come up with that again.
I'll open Rebecca's question.
Sorry.
We're not, we're not drilling down. Can we, could we drill down inside that we're ritual?
No, no, not at all. And the data doesn't populate until the day after. So I think that that is likely partly to not be able to track people. You cannot drill down any farther than what you're seeing. Yes.
So you can't drill down to an address?
No.
So being able to drill down to Waterfront Park is not the same as somebody's physical address?
No. Businesses, business addresses like Dozier, fully you can draw a box around it. A home, you cannot draw a box around. If you do the entire city, it'll pool that data, but you cannot do a specific home.
You can't target.
No, you cannot target.
If you have. Yet.
You can do a whole block.
If you have Google Earth and you said track all the time, did that monitor you that way? Or it looks like I missed that. You could do it that way.
First of all, we're tracking off.
That's, yeah, yeah, definitely, not at all.
Well, I think if that's the case, that person would not show up and say no. If, if you truly have said on everyone of your apps, no, 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 location sharing off, then those people don't end up in this figure.
So there's actually more people than this shows because.
Well, the number of people, that's, I mean, the number of people that are actually completely not tracked are like, yeah.
Okay, if you leave yourself a man home, you would not meet.
The thing I see too about this, and I don't know, is since you're now in the events business, this would help you comprehend some of your events conversations and decisions.
It would, yeah. So an excellent example would be this year, the summer market is moving from uh, behind the city gym to Waterfront Park. And we're testing that out at the end of the year, we'll be able to see, was that a smart decision? Did we get more visitors or was that not a smart decision?
Because you could go back.
We could go back. We could go back to twenty seventeen when they started.
I, I think it's small. I think it's an opportunity.
This is of one of those things like a street sweeper that
I'll bring it back to more time.
Which made a buck dollar on the budget. I think that we need to look at this. Do we like it? Do we find it interesting? Do we want it? Do we need it? This year, we need to think about what do we need to spend versus what do we want to spend?
Is it twelve month contracts?
It is. So they, uh, do that to avoid people signing up for short terms and also, yeah, also, just as a side note, also to deter that if we choose to go with it for just one year, then you're blocked from purchasing it again for three years. So we could do that in theory. We could do it this year. We can collect all the data from twenty seventeen and then three years I come back to the table and say, hey, it's time again. And we could do that, uh, potentially.
Well, they could figure out that that's not a good business model and decide to change the rules.
Yeah.
Because that's not a good business model.
Right.
Would it be possible to, I assume this is a contract that we would sign, to write into this if there are storms, floods, a hurricane on July the fourth? We're gonna have zero visitors. Okay, so that would be useless now for this year. But if there is, um, a natural event
You know what that says?
That that we would get a discount or be able to do it for two years.
So it's like, you know, there are certain contracts we can negotiate. This is like Netflix. We can't negotiate that contract.
Okay, yeah.
It's a subscription model.
So the, the, to play devil's advocate with your thought, if we had, this is, and, and with the flood, as I say, for your scenario, and we had a hurricane coming that day, what would show is for all of the businesses and all specifically business, how much they lost in the potential business because these people weren't here. We can actually help businesses that were not born. We were joined, we were expecting thirty thousand people and we got four. That was it. So it's not a complete waste of time because when you fill out those pre forms, you could help them with that. So there's something positive, but me, me speaking, I'd be willing to do this for years. And then if it doesn't play out or we don't get enough benefit out of it, then also your overall, but as positive revenue of thirty four thousand, that's a negative, that's a negative number?
It's a negative number. That's a, so your day would have a positive cash flow so far. But if you look at twenty five docket from projected FY twenty six projected, it is a decrease overall.
Dear did I read them, switching so the, the community center, it looks like it has a cash flow negative of up three to five thousand dollars, something like that. Which is the first time I've ever seen that. Thank you very much. Because we talked about how much it made, but not how much actually was the total between making and cost.
Yes.
And you feel comfortable that numbers are the true representation of the cost.
Yes.
Andre, is that what we're talking about? I'm, I'm right about that, babe. Is it, is it a whole year? Because you have an event, it's only costing us five thousand dollars.
It's net, no, that's net.
That's net.
It's rent, rent stays.
Yeah, the, the, the revenue is higher.
We'll make it five thousand.
And again, we haven't taken into account any rates.
Any rates, yes. I'm taking, I'm sorry. You're taking into account, you rate?
We have not. Setting up five thousand profit.
Can I ask about the occupancy tax? So we're, the one thirty one, is that on track for the two ten?
Based on the projections that we had of the latest month, yes.
And then with the scraping software that we have for Airbnb, what was the result of that?
So that was, that was in.
So that's within planning permitting. Uh, we've been working with that software company. They're still compiling the data list. They've given some partial list of data, but we're still waiting on a complete list of those properties and the, the projections from them.
We've had that for a while. Still here, have you? How long does it take to do that?
They just started recently. So I think they just got the data out before it was the end of last year.
Have we been paying them before that?
We stopped.
So we've been paying them for nothing? We got no data from, for the money you spent.
We got, we got corrected on Airbnb at some point where we took some off. We use that data to remove certain Airbnb. They run that correct.
So they have run that. They have run a list of compliant, non-compliant. They're working on drilling down specific properties. You, you can see an overview. It'll show, for example, a property at River Hotel that they have as compliant, but they don't know that it's at River Hotel and their, their software is still trying to drill that information down.
Ready to go on to a different, so just uh, going back to, I would just, I, I just had a question. Electric City Grant, that's ten thousand dollars. So if I'm recalling, we had gotten in the past a ten thousand dollar grant for signage. I was hoping to see a new sign at Taylor Field and, you know, we've talked about different areas. But nothing has ever come from that. So I just wondered about that.
Yeah, so the Taylor Field sign, uh, is a Parks and Rec position. So I'm not sure where Heather is at with Parks and Rec. The Electric Cities Grant Matching Funds lives within my department of line item, but anyone can apply to it from his department.
So then you, you have the grant and the expectation is that Parks and Rec's been designed to sign. I thought, I thought, I didn't know if it was you or Public Information Officer that had the design of signs and did the presentation with all that. I would have thought that that would have been the driver.
So we have that standard, but that standard was so then when Parks and Rec said, hey, it's time to replace and find a Taylor Field, we can say, okay, perfect. Here's the standards that you need to follow.
And you had those discussions? Then?
And, um, most notably, the cemetery committee has also been looking at potentially replacing some signs in Northwood that are swollen. So, uh, they are also currently looking at standards to use those to replace those signs.
Some of the conversation that surrounded the overlay, parking overlay in God Basin, was the potential of putting some historic signs down there. I don't know what, I mean, I guess for the fishing part. I don't know who would be, who would be the lead on that.
I would love to be involved in those conversations, but I'm not going to purchase it this time.
Well, it would be us self generating it. It wouldn't be, there's nobody to drive it. That was a part of the report was the suggestion that as we developed, had they do those parking lots, one of the things we as a city can do is put historical signs.
But, but, but but there's no, but there's no lead from the city on that.
Correct, correct. That's what I'm saying.
Mr. Manager, would you think about that in the future if they can someone believe in my law?
And since you have historic Johnson, for Johnson, it would make sense that the store message might come through you in conjunction with historical society.
Absolutely. I would love to help on that project. You just might. I do really enjoy this job. I, that's not, you know, that's not me coming in and choosing to get a good budget. That's me being honest. I really do enjoy this job.
So are you, is your department responsible for the Indian Trail? I didn't see it in the budget.
Yes.
And, um, revenue, any of that?
Yeah, I'd love to see that. I'm into it. Um, so this past year is the first year that we've ever charged for the Indian Trail meeting hall. The current rates are thirty dollars for a two hour meeting. Or you can buy a block of time at three hundred dollars for twelve meetings for two hours each of those twelve meetings. We have made three thousand one hundred ninety five dollars this past year, I believe that. And that is currently living inside of the community building lineup. Uh, I talked to Joey prior to this meeting. For next year, we're going to split that up and make it its own separate line.
Just pulled it in somewhere.
It's currently in community.
I think that rate committee needs to look at this. Do you have statistics on utilization? And you give that now that rates, you've had one year of having rates, did that change the utilization of the structure?
Um, we don't have a report like that currently, but we can get one before the rate committee to bring that.
I think that would be good for them to understand what that means.
And I, I would just look at the roll together tomorrow. We're talking about the rates and, yeah, we could charge potentially more for this building. But people who rent this building are at the lower end of the, like the small group, small, our people. Uh, maybe we have two rates for the story people. It tends Southwood centric groups that are meeting here and people who are not Southwood centric groups that are meeting here, but
Yeah, I know, those are.
Who are you referring to? Breakman.
I have a chess club.
There's, there's, so then are we milking them? Are we, are we charging them so much money that they can't afford to come here? And is that on purpose? Is it, if it, let's assume the chess club, the chess club comes here and does that. They're working on a ne- ne- bigger budget.
Mm-hmm.
Do we want to encourage that or not encourage that and just throw that out for consideration as we do rates? Perhaps a raise for the community center could be raised to reflect what everybody else is getting for a big venue like that, if it's a bigger dollar, keep it going. I just toss that out.
All right, so.
I'm gonna change this subject.
Oh, well, let me finish this. So historically nonprofits use this a lot.
Yeah.
So they have the bigger budget. So I would be interested to see how many nonprofits have gone elsewhere to try to find space to be in because they do things specific, the nonprofits that are specific to supporting Southwood conversations.
We've had some struggles with the Vol Ed Ferry Commission, they use this as a, some concern. Probably not coming for money, but they've, they've been not so happy about the prices of being here.
Uh, using this? Well, they probably don't have a budget. In the, in the, in the sense, they probably are having to manufacture a budget to try to do that. And I think that's the same with other nonprofits that use this thing. Like I have no, I truthfully don't know the name of the nonprofit, but I know that part of the reason this was upfitted and it was done as by volunteers initially, uh, was so that nonprofits differently could have this sort of meeting space that was community-based.
Absolutely.
So it'd be, uh, interesting to see the analysis and see the impacts that happened to these on that utilization.
So, okay, can we change the subject now?
I, I, can I follow up on this just for a minute?
Yes.
Okay. Can you look at, um, what, for example, the Methodist Church, uh, charges for the use of their fellowship hall? I think the rate's pretty high. Same thing with the Presbyterian Church. Their new, very nice, uh, fellowship hall, they rented out for things. And, um, the Women's Association that I'm a member of decided not to continue the, the meeting here because we frankly, it, it's a nonprofit, but we couldn't even afford the thirty dollars for an hour and, and actually it's two hours usually. And, um, I would tell you where we meet now for free, but I don't want that to be the house of community.
Our
Lovely. This charge of the Presbyterian Church facilities, this, this doesn't compare in any way to the next discharge.
Yeah, they're much bigger.
Uh, and Methodist Church has a really nice kitchen. So that's the Presbyterian Church there.
I, I haven't seen their kitchen, but I did see the
So in an effort to try to, uh, balance this budget, can we talk about that?
Yeah.
And so we haven't done this, we've had Lance's budget, we've had the police budget, which we need to go over and work that. But I would like to start here on page two because in the expenses, uh, total department, so just under total department revenue, there's a couple of things. Beautification committee, you put in five thousand, year-to-date, it looks like it's around fourteen fifty-two and, uh, twenty-four was at thirty-three eighty-five. I would just recommend that we try to bring that down. I know it's piddies.
No, no, I, I, this is a topic that they, they're addressing.
Okay.
I think you need to know that. Um, those white lights out there?
Mm-hmm.
That are hanging from the trees? The headlights are out, all over the place. So I've had multiple conversations with beautification about, my understanding was that they were charged making that. And they agree that that was part of their mission line. Um, one of the reasons why nothing has been used so far is the fact, according to that, is that they're waiting for the city to change the electrical outlets on it because of undergrounding and other issues that I don't understand. But they're waiting for the city to do that before they purchase the lights to go to something. So perhaps a little deeper onto if we want those lights. Is you, uh, go, if you, and if we want those lights, maybe we could get them to give us a little bit of explanation of what that is.
And the land's not pulling in there.
I, I don't, I didn't understand, and I wasn't gonna go into the, the question about plots, but
I'm gonna correct it.
And there's no, I've, I've been in those meetings that we, that B E M C doesn't even have a suggestion about how to get, how much of those things. There's homework from the line files.
What's that?
That's where it's coming from.
Okay.
So there's no power on the ground.
Uh, there's two different conversations here. One, five thousand dollars is the money that beautification uses to mulch by plants, uh, do all of the different things they do, the amount of projects. That is so well-staffed and such a great investment for all the volunteerism that is the labor. That would be a hundred thousand dollars for a panel land state company.
They've only, they've only spent a
No, but this is year-to-date, that's a year-to-date.
We just got a few more months, is my point.
But they're planning out, they, they plan out, it's not just a month-to-month expense. They plan out their budget. Now, there may be some other funds, I'm not
When was this?
And I have to report back because
All I'm suggesting is go back to the actual, the twenty-four actuals.
I just know that that, as, as this figure was picked, and I do know that I just had a conversation with them. Great. Mm-hmm. And they're laying out all the things they're just about to do, which would be, I think, done before the, before June.
We're going into spring right now, like
So this is their plan, they don't, they take
The five brand is for next year, so we gotta tighten the belt. Some, I mean, somebody needs to do something, hell, but where are you gonna get one point six million dollars?
Aren't you donating?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just to throw in there, the year-to-date is more than yesterday.
Is it?
It's, I'm sorry.
That's it, yesterday.
Right.
Yep, the year-to-date is yesterday.
Now going into their business.
Correct, this doesn't include any conferences, this is just
You know, I think as we get into, as we see how April and May, when we get to a manager's budget, we will have those more, not to explanation dollars, a year-to-date dollars once we get to that point. So I think we definitely have room, once, not only the beautification committee, but every department as we go over the next few months to see where our actual numbers lie, where we can adjust for that.
So then on the one-year seed money, so you're getting three thousand from the historical, uh, the Southport Historical Society. You're asking for an additional five. Can we do it with three? What can we get, I mean, because this is, these are the hard questions that we really have to ask. And I know it's nickel and diming, but we have to do this across or we have to do the alternative and we don't wanna do that.
Right. I, I think that in order to do it properly, we would get approved to move forward to gift shop. In this fiscal year, we would use the three to get everything back up into, uh, premier status level, uh, back to where it was level. And then we would use the five for the entire year of the budget type thing. Um, if that is not possible.
Will the three get you inventory? Will it get you set up inventory? Because if you're selling inventory, then that's turning over. You've got money to then buy more inventory.
I suspect that's not very much inventory.
Um, I'll say it like this. We will do the very best possible that we can with whatever we're given. So if we get to move forward with gift shop and three is all we're allowed to try with for this first year, then we will do that. Do I think the balance is the best case scenario? No, not at all. I think the best case scenario is using three to get us back up and running and the five to put us through the rest of the year.
Robert, could I make a suggestion? Because I made the statement that, that you were quoting today, is that we may have to revisit each department's kind of budgets.
Mm-hmm.
But part of her budget could be amended for revenue streams based on actions that we're going to take as far as rates and stuff goes. They said, there, if I, if I heard you correctly, Lance, you said they, their profit, the, the total revenue versus total expenses for this department, positive cash flow, five thousand something.
Community, yeah.
Okay. For the community though.
Correct.
Um, so I think I don't disagree with you at all. Everybody's gonna have to, if we can't figure out any other way, we're gonna have to, everybody's gonna cut things that they want to have. That's just gonna be the way it is. But let us put on the fast track, the rate can come back and see what that looks like. If anything jumps out at us that, that we can cut a whole program in this program, then let's have that discussion. Does that make sense? She's, I don't know what I'm saying.
She's building a model of someone being self-sufficient.
Correct.
Self-sufficient.
I mean, that's where I would, I thought you were likely to go with being self-sufficient.
So we go to the models that are not self-sufficient and make, and either they get income producers or some kind of, you know, the war. Or we cut them. She's getting, she'd be productive with our money.
And I think we can, we can help that with the rate, the different rates that we're charging different things.
Yeah.
And that would, that would change the whole bottom line of this program.
There's like training, just as an example, in this budget, training opportunities for directors, assistant directors. You know, the actual in twenty-four was three thousand.
Mm-hmm.
We're a year late at, just at two thousand.
Right.
They're asking for five. Is this a year where we need to be concerned about training?
Yes.
I, I think that's a, something that Elena would have to give us greater detail because there's something that has to be done this year that they can cut part of this perception. That's just bottom line. So if we don't do anything with your budget at all, um, there's, there's, there's gonna be a discussion about that as well. But I think your budget, Mark, that it stayed, can be self-sufficient if we change the rates. And then we go to the other departments that, it seems that they'd have to look at what they're doing. If you're making money at the end of the day, when you make your money.
I'm, I'm tired of fighting with one hand behind our backs. Let's don't sit, we can't sit, we can't compete. We are the winners of that. We are the top winners of that. Why are we worried about competing with any? It's like giving away your authority.
Well, we're not even competing in, in the gift shop.
Yeah.
Because the gifts, as I understand it, are unique to the gift shop.
Yes.
And it is, I've never been in, I don't care if you go up the mountain in Harlem, you can buy whiskey from a plant fifteen miles away that Washington built.
Um, how do you know that?
Because I bought it. Um, so any, anybody's easy to go to.
Yeah.
Because we shouldn't be ashamed to make money. We shouldn't be hiding, afraid of being somebody else.
What we have here really is, like, best guess, is best case scenario. If everything went right, if it's something, you know, we have to back away, we back away. But this, this is, this is a wish list which you'd like to have, everything went right, funding was there.
I'd be willing to lower my travel and training from five to three.
Right. I mean, yeah.
And I think, and we have to, as you say, we have to look at every little thing. Is a thousand dollars here and there gonna make a one point four million dollar deficit, no? But we certainly have to take a look at, but we have to look department by department without sacrificing our core services, our employees, our citizens, and making sure that we do have training and travel, for example.
Well, I mean, just as an example, best case scenario, as Frank said, we're gonna make money or it's gonna break even. But what if it doesn't?
Right.
So this loss of thirty-four thousand becomes a bigger number. That's, that's, that's a, that can actually happen. So how do we encourage department heads to come back to us for the budget that is?
Well, I mean, there are
Very four thousand dollars doesn't sound like much of a loss.
There's very few, there's very few departments that will be profitable. I mean, police is not profitable, it can't be. So, um, government's not necessarily a profitable business, but we have to come as close to balance as we can without raising taxes too high, without cutting employees, without sacrificing our core services. So I think as we look over the next few months, making adjustments in-house with the departments, looking at our conversation overall as we get year-to-date actual numbers, it'll give us a more clearer picture as we get to our end product.
This is one very, uh, place that we have that has the possibility, maybe make some money.
Yes.
Everything else is Well, look at Parks and Recreation, I don't know if that department takes in money.
Right.
Permitting inspections.
But, but their money has to stay with them, right?
For the most part.
Tourism has to stay with you too.
And as an example, I mean, like for me, if we go to tourism filming fees, we went from eighteen fifty to fifteen thousand and now that becomes our new expectation.
Well, that's, that's the rates would change.
No, because how many more movies are we gonna get?
I'm, I'm just saying that in twenty-four, we had eighteen hundred and fifty dollars. And then the very next year, our, year-to-date is fifteen thousand, so that becomes our new standard and expectation.
Right, so, right now, there's a series that uses Southwood, so we're seeing regular filming from that. And it's like when Dawson's Creek was here, when, um, we got some other shows that were here.
And it just stopped.
Why? That's the thing.
If this market causes that to just end, we've now budgeted a substantial amount of money and had an expectation of only a thirty-four thousand dollar loss. If this number comes in, if we go from fifteen thousand to eighteen hundred dollars, that adds to the budget.
It does, yeah, I think that this
That's what we're talking about.
And at some rate, you may have, you may make course correction.
Other season, maybe.
Well, I mean, for me, I'd rather go in low and say, you know what? We might not meet the number we got last year. Let's go an average between twenty-four and twenty-five. That's how we would budget that line item.
So the reason why I budgeted it the same as this past year, just for clarity sake, that eighteen hundred that you're seeing in twenty-four was due to the writer's strike. Because you're right, the worst that could happen, which is that film and stuff, it definitely did happen. Um, this past year, um, North Carolina reinstated some grant opportunities and things like that. Um, and then also Screen Gens opened up a whole new facility in Wilmington, which allowed another whole set of crew to come. And when they want the small town to feel, when they're in Wilmington, they come to us. We, we are their help stock for that. And so that is why I can confidently say between the grid programs and the additional studio, that I feel like we will at least make what we did this past year. And that was just my thinking on it, whatever ends up happening, absolutely. Um, but that is why I added the number I did.
Do you have, um, theaters, home, um, movies and so on for next year, for the coming year?
Um, so as Rebecca mentioned, we do have a series she's working with us. Um, and I do expect them back. And then the summer I turned three, um, our water run is their town shops. And so they do come quite often for smaller segments.
So they're definitely coming back?
As long as there's some plans.
Do they get renewed?
I believe so.
Yes, they get, they get renewed. But any movies, uh, reaching out?
Not at this time.
And the, a lot of the, the, um, the site scout knows Southwood well enough that they won't come here like in advance anymore.
Um, it's kind of a quick turnaround.
Is there, uh, any more from you, Miss?
No, does anybody else have anything else?
I think we have I think you write a book for Shad, I think you made very good points.
Mm-hmm.
Um, maybe asking you back.
Absolutely.
Um, and we put all the work on the rate committee to figure out what we want to do with that. You have that, may, may or may not be accurate in budget. Before.
All right.
And there's a great potential you need to put some thought into. If they came back and said along a five percent cut for us to board, because if the government does, because it's easier to come if you make the decision which you're gonna cut than we debate seven, about seven, seven directions. Think about that. Right? I'm hoping that we don't have to do that, but you should have that in your mind, what it would look like for five percent. Anybody else have any thoughts? Anybody else have any thoughts?
Great job.
Thank you.
All right. I will then entertain a motion to adjourn. Wait a second, any discussion? Are there any in equal favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?